Call to order the meeting of the Select Board May 2, 2025, conducted by remote participation. Today's meeting is being conducted in a remote format consistent with provisions and state law for remotely conducted public meetings. I will now confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda, our president can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Len Diggins?
Here, yes.
Eric Helmoth?
Yes.
John Hurd?
Yes.
Steve DeCoursey? He's probably having Wi-Fi issues. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town manager Jim Feeny?
Yes.
Town council Mike Cunningham?
Yes.
Select Board Administrator Ashley Mar?
Yes.
Deputy Town Manager Finance Director Alex McGee?
Yes.
Before we begin, please note that this meeting is being conducted entirely over Zoom. It is being recorded and simultaneously broadcasted on ACMI. Both Zoom observers and persons watching ACMI can follow the posted agenda materials found on the town's website, specifically the Select Board agendas and minutes page. Finally, because this meeting is being held remotely, each vote this morning will be taken by roll call by Attorney Cunningham. We now go to final votes and comments.
Oh, Madam Chair, we might want to do a sound check on Attorney Munson.
Oh, I'm sorry, Attorney, Deputy Town Council Jaclyn Munson?
Yes, here, thank you.
You can check Steve now.
And Mr. DeCoursey has arrived, Madam Chair.
Okay, Steve DeCoursey?
Here.
Here, thank you.
Airbnb is a legal library.
Are you surprised?
I thought you were taking a vacation, anyway.
It's the mobile legal office.
Yeah. This morning, just because everyone's a panelist, just if we could all just chime in versus me recognizing you, and then two chiming at once, you can work amongst each other. Who speaks first? That's okay. For, okay, final votes and comments, articles for review. Article seven, twenty-three, and twenty-four. Attorney, I mean, Mr. Feeny?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. So, Article seven has been significantly revised to incorporate what had been the existing Section five of Title one, Article twenty-two of the town's bylaws, but that for which had been missing from the town's bylaws since it's a date of adoption by the town, by town meeting and subsequent approval by the Attorney General's office. So, the prior clerk had not properly incorporated Section five as approved by town meeting into the bylaws, which led to the preliminary Article seven, which was ruled out of scope, introducing an entirely new Section five, which was, once we discovered this table deemed to be obviously inadequate way to approach Article seven. As such, the new Article seven vote language is to simply add the proposed revolving fund as a new authorized fund to the last line of the existing table, and we will, if approved, be just simply adding the language that you see in red at the end of the table to the bylaw as written. And then, we also took the opportunity in the recommended vote to appropriately capture the expenditure cap, which Mr. Helmoth had previously agreed to do via amendment, but due to the scope ruling, we obviously need to readdress that here with this vote, which according to a conversation with Town Council and the Town Moderator, will become the new main motion because there is technically nothing before the town meeting body currently. With that, and based on the discussions that were had on Article seven on the first night of town meeting, we did take the opportunity to add a few paragraphs of text to the comment section in an effort to clarify the capital planning committee's planned role in the use of this revolving fund, as well as some context surrounding how our existing solar arrays actually work, and to note that this would have no impact on the school's operating budget as it exists today because any credits are immediately applied to the utility bills to reduce charges. That's not something that we're getting a check for from a third party that would be deposited into the revolving fund. So, certainly, if, you know, Town Council has something he'd like to add as well.
Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly on a procedural matter to follow up on that. Because of the scope ruling related to the original main motion contained in the Select Board's original report, and the fact that there is no main motion, Mr. Helmoth's amendment to that main motion no longer exists. The issue that was, that was sought to be addressed by that amendment has been incorporated into the new motion that will be before the body, so there would be no need for Mr. Helmoth to make a new, to move to amend the new main motion. It's incorporated into this revised motion, which will be before the board, before the town meeting, and there'll be no need for Mr. Helmoth to address that, hopefully.
Thank you.
And I think that the final thing I would add, Chair, is that the language that was incorporated into the table for this specific revolving fund in terms of what the receipts would be and what the program expenses would be track nearly word for word what had been in the warrant article as submitted in an effort to be, to stay exactly on the rails so that there could be no further sort of discussion or argument about the scope of what was being sought. So, I intended to track very closely that, which had been put into the warrant to protect against further scope considerations.
And I don't have my, I didn't bring my sheet up in terms of speakers, but if anyone asks any questions on the current or revised language, like, you know, capital planning, anything greater than fifty grand, well, how will capital planning know? Who will answer those questions?
Uh, that would probably be either Alex or I.
Anyone have any questions, comments on seven?
Yeah, yeah, this, this looks great to me. Thank you all for your work. This is just a formatting point for the report, and I know this is just because it was put together last night, but could we, I just noticed there is, under, under Article seven, there's a under spoken comment, there's a vote, and it's empty. And then for, you know, underneath, there's a recommended vote, so I think we should, and we should be consistent with this little supplemental report, so if we're going to put the recommended vote first, always do that. But we could just correct that, that formatting issue.
So, like, vote, if the vote?
So, yeah, I would say either leave the recommended vote up, either recommend a vote or vote the comment, or just strike that empty, that, that vestigial vote that's, that's just there. Again, this is just a formatting issue.
Mr. Helmoth, if I could?
Oh, sure.
We, we took the vote out, but left the placeholder. That's where we would write unanimous vote five zero, or if anyone?
Oh, that's what that is, okay.
Well, I did not want to assume that the votes would be unanimous and that everyone was going to be here, or like?
Yeah, yeah.
As interest or absence.
No, 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 okay, yes. Disregard everything I said. Now, yeah, that makes complete sense. Thank you.
Attorney Cunningham?
I had one small change.
Mr. DeCoursey, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the second to last line of the recommended vote, the section is, it has a small s. I think that should be a capital S.
What page is that?
That's on the recommended vote.
Okay.
Uh, that's going to be page two, I believe. And where it's referenced Section fifty-three and a half, the one in second to last line is a small s.
Thank you. Thank you for catching that, because everyone's going to be microscoping it. Attorney Cunningham?
It gets to follow up to Mr. Helmoth's comment. It's well taken, and as a procedural matter, the way that we envisioned this would work is that if the supplemental report is approved by the board this morning, that vote language will be added. Any corrections that are necessary or changes that the board would like to be made will be added, and then it'll be forwarded to the Town Moderator and the Town Clerk today in whatever format the board deems appropriate. Once the moderator has a chance to look at it, it will, and assuming it's approved by the moderator, it will go out to the town meeting list by email this afternoon prior to the 5:00 p.m. deadline, so that it's properly before town meeting on Monday.
Mr. Hurd, did you have your hand up? No? Oh, Attorney Munson, I'm sorry. Right there in front of me.
That's okay. I was just wondering if someone could send me a copy of the report we're looking at because I don't think I have a copy of that supplemental dated report.
I can send it to you, too.
It's also on Novus, Jaclyn.
Okay.
Coming right now, three different ways. Sorry about that. Okay, so, anything else on seven? Okay, Article twenty-three revolving funds. Mr. Feeny somewhat spoke to. Mr. Feeny, anything else to add?
So, on Article twenty-three, given the discovery again with Section five of Title one, Article twenty-two, it became clear that the revolving funds that we had attempted to authorize last year may not have in fact been duly authorized because they did not seek an amendment to the town's bylaws, so when starting to address seven, it became clear to me that, as sort of the dominoes go, that we would have to similarly address twenty-three and twenty-four. So, the amendment to twenty-three is simple in such that it strikes both the Cutter Gallery rentals and the community center rentals from that which is being reauthorized for fiscal year twenty-six. And then I tried to capture same in the comment, just noting that they were authorized at last year's town meeting, but since they were not accompanied by a bylaw amendment, it is likely, you know, their validity could be in question. So, based on that, I directed the controller to freeze the accounts and return any remaining balances to the general fund, and I thought it best to be transparent about that and report that directly to the meeting to preempt any similar questions.
Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And that issue is additionally addressed in the opening comments in the supplemental Select Board report that talks about, you know, the Minuscule Modernization Act 2016, how our other revolving funds were created by Article thirty in 2017 and done so appropriately, and that the Section five, which Town Meeting adopted in 2017, despite the fact that it wasn't uploaded to the website and put into our PDF so that people could see it, it had legal force of law. So, those revolving funds that predated last year's actions are valid. They were created in accordance with the applicable law, which is Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half. It's just that I share the manager's concerns regarding last year's actions. They, there, an amendment to the bylaw is required by the statute, and that wasn't done last year, so that's why it's only those two and not the others that are affected by this.
And just a procedural housekeeping, since Article twenty-three appears on page eight, and I've already brought this to Town Council manager's attention, right above it, which is Section two and three for Article eighteen, Section two B, there's just a small typo. If it says, it says if a majority of votes cast in answer to he question, we're going to change he to thee. But back to Article twenty-three. Any questions on that? I assume that I'll do a brief introduction on this, but regarding the explanation on the Cutter House rentals, and I forget what the other revolving fund is that we're freezing, that whoever, whether it's Mr. Feeny or Mr. McGee, will speak to that, so I won't.
Right.
Okay, I just don't want to repeat things.
Totally.
Yeah. Any other questions on that, on twenty-three?
Diane, I'll just note that there was a change under the Robbins Library Rentals 3114. There was a typo in the amount that one of the town meeting members had found. Under receipts, it had listed eighty-five thousand, seven hundred, twenty-seven, and eighty-eight cents, and that number should be five thousand, four hundred and seventy-five. So, that's corrected as well as part of the supplemental report.
Oh, that's what you corrected in red, correct?
Yep, yes, that's correct.
And everybody else has that on page ten. Thank you, Attorney Cunningham. Thank you, Ms. Mar. Now, I'll go to Article twenty-four.
All right, so similarly, with, presented as problematic with Article twenty-four was that it appeared in a different location in the warrant than Article seven, yet they both sought to take the same action, and that was to create a new revolving fund, and whereby Article seven found its way into the section and called out for the community via the warrant article language that it was seeking a bylaw amendment, whereas Article twenty-four sought just a revolving fund and didn't necessitate or make clear that it was seeking a bylaw amendment. It appeared there could be a scope issue for us collectively if we pursued establishing a new bylaw through this type of warrant article at the same time as pursuing a new revolving fund in a manner similar to Article seven. It seemed like we couldn't do both ways at the same time. So, again, to be cautious and clear with our scope, what we thought was the most appropriate action, and I do believe Town Council did discuss with the moderator, was because of the issue of not seeking an amendment to the Title one, Article twenty-two, Section five of the bylaws, was to have the board take a vote of no action on this article and simply not act upon it until it could be appropriately inserted into the warrant at a future town meeting. So, I would expect that this revolving fund, as well as the two revolving funds that were created at annual town meeting 2024, would be properly placed on warrant for next year's annual town meeting to ensure that they are properly established and cannot be questioned.
Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Manager. That, this change is recommended, you know, because of the board's initial consideration of this article, through no fault of its own. We didn't know about the Section five that wasn't in the town bylaws, so now that we're aware of that, this, this course of no action is recommended to to make sure that we don't have another article deemed out of scope, and I think we'll, as the manager indicated, we'll try and bring it back next year, but this is a reconsideration based on new information that the board did not have at the time of its initial hearing. That's why the recommendation is changed.
Any questions on twenty-four? And/or any questions or corrections to the appendix? Just the last one or two pages of the supplemental?
Madam Chair, I, I don't have any corrections or proposed corrections to the articles. I, I did want to talk briefly about the transmittal letter. Maybe, I don't know if you want to do that afterwards. There's one sentence in there that I, I wanted to address, but that's outside the vote, so if you want to do it later, I'm happy to bring it up after we have the votes.
No, you want to do now, because what I plan on doing is taking two votes on the supplemental for the first vote, seven, twenty-three, twenty-four, the appendix, and then taking a vote, which I think Mr. Helmoth on eighteen, will recuse himself, so if he wants to, in case he can't get back on, we've discussed all the business. So, if you want to go to that, Mr. DeCoursey?
Okay, actually.
Madam Chair, you're correct. In looking at the appendix, I wonder, because this is an FY 2024 revolving funds expenditure detail, it still lists Cutter Gallery rentals and community center rentals. Not only did we not duly establish those revolving funds, but they didn't exist in fiscal year twenty-four, right? They were not even attempted to be established until twenty-five. So, I'm of the opinion that those should also be struck.
Is that agreeable to everyone? Can I just ask the question, all these Mr. DeCourseys and others' comments, who's responsible for making those?
I've been making the changes as we've been talking, Diane, and I can circulate it to everybody once the meeting's over.
All right, so what we did is we actually created this last night as a, as a shared document. We were all in one room accessing the shared documents so that we no longer had sort of version confusion with folks working on different versions and making different edits that didn't make it into the final document, so Ashley has master control over what is now a shared file, and we'll be making all final edits as we go.
Mr. DeCoursey, regarding the transmittal letter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a comment and maybe a question for potential change on the the second to last paragraph, which the last paragraph is just one sentence. Second to last sentence that reads the changes to the recommended votes on Article seven, twenty-three, and twenty-four set forth below reflect the board's efforts, efforts to correct. I, I'm wondering if we can put something a little bit more affirmative, that, that the recommended changes comply with the manner by which revolving funds must be established under Article twenty-two. And we don't have to do the exact link, but if that could be changed, rather than, it almost reads like here's another attempt by us to do this, and I think we want to say it affirmatively that we're in compliance by doing this.
So, I think what I'm hearing is the efforts to correct the manner, if we can put different verbiage?
Exactly, make it a little bit, yeah, exactly.
So, the reflect the boards, what did you say, compliance?
Yeah, I, I would just make it more of an affirmative statement that it's, it's on our efforts that, that the corrections comply with the manner by which revolving funds must be established under Article twenty-two. Something to that effect. I just, I'd rather take our board's efforts because it almost seems like, okay, we're, we're giving this a shot. Let's see if this one works.
So, board's intent. Attorney Cunningham?
I, thank you, Madam Chair. I think I understand Mr. DeCoursey's concern with that sentence, and I appreciate it. I will make the change, and I think I'll, I'll circulate that. We want to make it affirmative language so that we are assuring town meeting that the articles now comply with standard under the law by which revolving funds must be created. It's not, it's no longer, it's not an effort to try and get to that compliance. This is compliant.
This gets to it, exactly.
So, a procedural thing on that, when we finish this, and I do appreciate the Town Manager, Town Council, Deputy Town Manager, Deputy Town Council doing this supplemental and gathering everything with the regular schedule of town meeting, court dates. You had one yesterday afternoon, and Ms. Mar putting all this together, so nobody's overlooking that. So, when we leave from this meeting, changes would be made. Do we want to set a time commitment that by three o'clock, four o'clock, not only perhaps will the document, will the changes be available to all of us, that if anyone, like, I'm going to leave it to Mr. DeCoursey regarding the second to last sentence in the second paragraph, just to look over, we will all do that, but do we want to say by like three o'clock, four o'clock? Like, what, that we say that's it, we're going to release it? You know what I'm trying to say, Mr. Feeny?
Yeah, so it would be our intention, if at all possible, to transmit this to the moderator then roughly twelve noon, by, by right around close of business. So, I would expect if it's nine o'clock now, and perhaps this meeting were over at, say, nine-thirty or ten, we could have a revised version to the board, you know, within a half hour, ten-thirty or so, and that would provide the board with, you know, roughly an hour and a half to provide
Okay.
feedback, but be our intention to hopefully allow Ms. Mar to close this out before or at close of business today.
And can I, oh, Attorney Cunningham?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, the reason for that is I think that the moderator mentioned that the last meeting, you know, five o'clock is technically the deadline to send things out to town meeting in advance of Monday's meeting. However, they like, he likes to have it, you know, in the mid-afternoon by Friday, you know, three o'clock or so, so that he can review it. Obviously, we've spoken to the moderator. Moderator is aware this is coming. This isn't the typical amendment or substitute motion that has, it comes, shows up unseen at four-thirty on a Friday afternoon, so hopefully it'll be a pretty quick turnaround, but we'd like to do it pretty quickly to get, but we understand the board's desire to see it, and we'll, we'll make these changes against the board quickly.
And so, to my colleagues, if I say, if someone, correct me, by no later than two P.M. this afternoon? Even, I'd say twelve noon, but I, in case someone has, you know, Wi-Fi issues, is, is that a good time that we say? If, so that everyone knows by?
Well, that sounds a little bit tight if we need to wrap this up and get this out, so, you know, I would suggest this morning, honestly.
By noon, by eleven? What time would you suggest, Mr. Helmoth?
Well, I mean, I think, I think the best answer is, is the people putting together the report, but just for the town manager said, you know, I think if we need to get this buttoned up by noon, I would say we'd need our comments before that.
Okay, that, that makes, that's fine. So, by noon, so that if you all haven't heard from any of us, or by noon, you've heard from one or two, then, you know, keep going. I just don't want it to be delayed to say, we never heard from Mom. So, that's okay with everyone, noon?
Well, I guess what I'm hearing is probably more like eleven, because if they want to get it to the moderator by the close of business at noon, you know, then if someone were to have a change, it would give them a little time to adjust to the change. I think we're anticipating, you know, no change. I mean, so noon would be fine, but if there were to be a change, then I think if we aim for eleven, you know, that would probably give people time to adjust.
Sounds good.
All right.
All right, thank you.
This is going to be a shocker, but don't, don't wait around for any comments from me. There's people, there's people I trust, and they're all on this meeting.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I hear you, Mr. Hurd.
Big S and little t correction. We got those, that's out, woo, no. Any other comments before I go to two separate votes? And then the person responsible for emailing to the board the revisions to this, would that be Ms. Mar, Mr. Feeny? Are you working out amongst yourselves?
I can email it to the board, Mrs. Mahon.
Okay, so we'll be on the lookout for an email from Ms. Mar. So, if it's okay, first I'd like to, I lost my page, take the first vote to approve Article seven, twenty-three, twenty-four and the appendix of the supplemental report to the 2025 annual town meeting, the motion by?
So moved.
Mr. Hurd, seconded by?
Mr. Diggins.
Mr. Diggins. Any further discussion on that motion, if not Attorney Cunningham?
Mr. Helmoth?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
And then now we will discuss approving the final votes and comments for Article eighteen. Mr. Helmoth?
I will excuse myself, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Helmoth. I'll just wait till. Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the supplemental. Oh, Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just hoping if I could just quickly address this item under discussion approval revised Select Board report to town meeting. Article eighteen was the ranked choice voting home rule legislation. There was a pending amendment submitted by the article's proponent. In an effort to try and head off the need for the changes in that amendment, this supplemental report will incorporate those changes, so that this, Mr. Dennis is the proponent. They, they will include those changes that were set forth in his amendment, so would obviate the need for him to make that amendment, in my opinion, at town meeting. So, it really is, it involves very little changes, very few changes to Article eighteen, other than to make sure that Mr. Dennis's changes are there, so he will, we won't need to spend time at town meeting considering his amendment. So, that's, that's the reason for these changes, and that's what's really addressed in Article eighteen changes in this supplemental report.
Thank you. Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question for Town Council. This is one, I was, I was the lone dissenter, and I know we're voting on revised language, but is this vote, should this reflect the original vote? In other words, if I was opposed to it at the beginning, I, I like the changes, but I, as far as reporting to town meeting, it seems like I should be consistent with my first vote, because this isn't just, we're not just voting the change language or voting the whole article, correct?
Mr. Attorney Cunningham?
Madam Chair, thank you. Correct, Mr. DeCoursey. So, this is the new main motion. So, to the extent that you had issues and or objections to this article when it was considered by the board at the initial hearing, those would likely persist with the revised motion.
Okay, fine. Yeah, yeah, and I, I agree with changing the language for purposes of town meeting, but substantively, I, I will remain where I am. Okay, thank you. Okay, fine. Yeah, yeah. And I, I agree with changing the language for purposes of town meeting, but substantively, I, I will remain where I am. Okay, thank you.
Yes, we are not incorporating Mr. Schlickman's amendment into our language.
Madam Chair, that, thank you, Mr. It's a good point, Mr. Diggins, because there is another pending amendment substitute motion submitted by a different town meeting member. That town meeting member will still have the opportunity to present that, um, but this will become the new main motion. We'll just eliminate Mr. Dennis's need. To amend his ma, uh, to, to amend the motion and then Mr. Mr. Schlickman can proceed as he, as he sees fit.
Yeah, I, I was just saying that in humor, you know, but yeah, right.
It's a good, it's a good question, though. Good point.
Any further questions, comments? Uh, do I have a motion?
I, I'll, I'll make the motion to make these, uh, 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 corrections into, um, article eighteen.
Okay, motion by Mr. Diggins amended and approved, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Any further discussions? If not, attorney Cunningham?
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Decourse?
No.
Mrs. Mahon?
Yes.
Three to one vote with one abstention.
Of Mr. Helmuth.
Recused, excuse me.
And, uh, that again will be reflected, yes, before in the vote. Okay, um, I think that's everything on the agenda. And unless someone tells me something different, I'll take them. Tony Cunningham?
Um, I would suggest maybe the vote, if it's up to the chair, but, um, to approve the revised report in general. Um, perhaps just, we'll make the changes, but if the board wants to make that approval now, we can, subject to the board's, the board's changes recommended today. At today's meeting, that the supplemental report will be approved by the board in, in total.
Is that something, uh, Mr. Helmuth, we can ask to vote on this? Okay.
I'll make that motion. So moved.
By Mr. Helmuth, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Decourse. Any further discussion or comments? If not, attorney Cunningham?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mr. Decourse?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahon?
Yes.
Your name is who?
Thank you. Uh, with that, besides all our thanks to each other for, for doing this, including our autostater. I'll take a, a motion to adjourn by.
So moved.
Mr. Diggins, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Decourse, any further discussion? No discussion on adjourned, attorney Cunningham?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mr. Decourse?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahon?
Yes, thank you.
Your name is who?
Have a good morning.
Time availability. Thank you, sir.